Welcome everyone to our special session of the Ontolog Forum. Today, we have the privilege of of John Sawa and Aaron Majumdar to present on a very current topic on evaluating the GPT. So, go ahead, John.
Okay, now, first start about getting into the strengths and limitations of GPT. So I'll give some examples that show where it's working very nicely and where it falls apart. I'll then talk about the theoretical foundation and some issues about the large language models and also about the work that Aaron and I have been doing for about 20 years or so on working with AI and conceptual graphs and methods of reasoning and using the prologue language for doing logic programming and putting everything together for a large range of very interesting applications. Then I will get into issues about how the human brain works and how these various parts of what's going on in the brain have to be modeled or simulated or connected in some way that resembles in some way what happens inside the human brain. And the thing is that people say, oh, we're doing something that's totally different from what the human brain does. And that is false. The technology may be very, very different, but the way the human brain produces language and logic and reasoning and emotions and everything else is something that has to be somehow represented inside our computers. If we don't do that, we're not going to have an AI system that resembles what people actually do and is able to do the same kinds of computations and thinking and reasoning and everything else. And I want to emphasize that emotions are extremely important because emotions are what controls what people do. And without emotions and without intentionality and without wisdom and empathy and all those things, the computer will never ever be a true AI system. It may do interesting computation, but not true artificial intelligence. Okay, so the so the and then there's a and I'll give first the and then a part two will be by Aaron Majumdar who will talk about the Permian technology and its applications. There's a huge number of things that are going on that Aaron has been developing with a large number of colleagues. And we have been getting into a very important extension to the work that we had been doing 20 years, 10 and 20 years ago. Okay. Okay, now, I'll start with three short conversations with GPT four by Yeegen Choi, who was talking about this in a TED Talk. And if you want to listen to her TED Talk or and watch her talking, there's a link to that on further on. Now she started with three short little conversations with GPT four. In the first one, she says, suppose I left five clothes to dry out in the sun and I took and it took them five hours to dry completely. How long would it take to dry 30 clothes? And GPT four said 30 hours. Now that is clearly a bad idea. If it's five hours for five clothes, it's still going to be five hours. Clearly, it made a mistake. Yeegen then said, I have a 12 liter jug and a six liter jug and I want to measure six liters. So GPT four said, fill the six liter jug, pour the water from six to 12, from six to 12 liter jug. Fill the six liter jug again, very carefully pour the water from six to 12 liter jug. But now you have an overflowing 12 liter jug and nothing in the six liter jug. So clearly, that was a mistake. Uh, Yeegen continued on and had a third example said, would I get a flat tire by bicycling over a bridge that is suspended over nail screws and broken glass? GPT says, yes, highly likely. And Yeegen says, but if a bridge is suspended over the nails and broken glass, then the bicycle wouldn't touch them. And so her conclusion is GPT is unbelievably intelligent and shockingly stupid. If you want to watch and hear her complete TED Talk, there's the link. Now, another person on Ontolog Forum, Stephen Young, decided to work with the GPT and give us some help. So Stephen said, suppose I left five clothes to dry out in the sun and it took them five hours to dry completely. How long would it take to dry 30 clothes? GPT says 30 hours. And then he says, what if I put all the 30 out, all 30 out at once? And GPT said, if you put all 30 clothes out at once and they all have the same exposure to the sun as the initial five clothes, it would still take five hours to drive out completely. So that's an interesting point there that if you give it rephrase your question in appropriate ways, you can get a correct answer. And then Stephen said, think about this step by step. He's now telling it to think hard about this and think about every step. I have a 12 liter jug and a six liter jug and I want to measure six liters. And GPT gives exactly the same mistake that it did before. So now he, Stephen rephrases it and he says, examine your result. How many liters are in the six liter jug? And GPT apologizes since the six liter jug was filled completely in step three, blah, blah, blah. My previous response contained an error and I appreciate your attention. So Stephen said, would you like to try again? And then said, yes, and then gives a better answer that at the end, it has six liters in the 12 liter jug and no need to do anything further. Now, uh, and then for the bridge, Stephen says, think about this step by step. Would I get a flat tire by bicycling over a bridge that is suspended over nail screws and broken glass? And here's a step by step analysis. Approach the bridge. And at this point, your tires are not yet in contact and go on on the next thing. You cross the bridge and as long as it's suspended over the nail screws of broken glass, your tires would not come in contact, then leave the bridge and your tires should still be intact. So by carefully controlling what you're doing, you can force the system to give you a correct answer. Unfortunately, people who don't understand GPT and how it works and people have not worked with it for a while and people who do not know the correct answer have no idea how to get it, force it to give the correct answer. So ordinary people who are just asking a question will still get the wrong answer and they don't know that there's, that they got the wrong answer. So what do you do? Well, so the point is that GPT has this huge amount of data and for these examples, GPT failed to give the correct answer, but Stephen found a way to force it to give the answer. But the point is that any information that is used by GPT, it's used without evaluation. It does not have any way to evaluate it. It does not have any system for precise formal reasoning. It just determines what's the most probable phrase to continue what the pattern of language that it had. And the point is that when, also when patterns are derived from other sources such as images of the image recognition system does not necessarily use the same words that the conversation would use. And so it can still be misled by choices of words. And as we all have heard about, drivers of the cars frequently get into problems with mislabeled imagery and this causes some accidents, including death. That's not a good idea. Death is not a good thing we want from an AI system. Okay, now here's another example. This is by Gary Marcus, who's been a psychologist who has been working on these things for years. And he has one example about his own son and the mother will ask, which of your animal friends will come to school today? And son says, big bunny, because bear and platypus are eating. Now, this answer is sort of confusing. The mother looks in the boy's room where the stuffed bear and the stuffed platypus are sitting in chairs at a table and quote, eating. And so after she sees how the son arranged all of those things, she could reconstruct his pattern of thinking. The bear and the platypus are eating. Eating and going to school cannot be done at the same time. Big bunny isn't doing anything else. Therefore, big bunny is available. Now, the question is, could GPT understand those two sentences? Could it reconstruct that information? And if it were connected to an image recognition system, would it be able to reconstruct the pattern of thinking that the mother did? Well, that's the one point here. And the answer is that if you had an image recognition system that scanned the boy's room and reported an English description, it could describe every object in the room, the position of every object and its pattern of relations and information about how the boy used or played with those things. And the point is that it's very unlikely to use the same words like big bunny, bear and platypus and are eating. It wouldn't use the same words. It wouldn't. And the image recognition system wouldn't know what words to use and would have the same kind of mistakes that were caused by any other kind of image recognition system. Now, the next point I want to talk about is the theoretical foundation and then a little bit about Permian, the, the new computer system that the new project, the new business project company we've been developing. The large language models, the LLMs that store all the data in GPT use tensor calculus to represent the representations. It has some very powerful operations that go beyond vectors and matrices and tensors and combine them in various ways. It can transform combined tensors. It can map vectors which represent strings of words in any language, natural or artificial, any computer language or any natural language, mapping them to and from one another. Now, the linguists say that LLMs are not a language model, so that term language model is incorrect. They do not, the tensors do not make the linguistic information explicit. They do not distinguish syntax, semantics and ontology. And GPT cannot use the, over 60 years of AI research, the, all the work that's been done in natural language processing and machine translation and graphics and semantics. It just does not use that. So the question that we have is how to combine GPT with other AI technology? There's been 60 years of it. How do we use it for finding and translating linguistic information and using other AI systems to do the complex and precise and reliable reasoning? Well, uh, here's a bit of history. The Vivo Mind Company that Aaron and I and several other people developed, that was in around 2000, the year 2000. And we use conceptual graphs as the knowledge representation language. And there was a system called cognitive memory for indexing and finding CGs. That was a very powerful system. And if you look at the bottom line, there's a link to a, some slides that go into the details of exactly how could the cognitive memory worked and what it did. And it also used ontology for representing the semantics of the conceptual graphs. And it used prologue as a language for high speed reasoning and translation. And we had a very impressive range of applications for the 10 years from 2000 to 2010. So you can go and click on that file, on that link and that will give you some examples and show you the applications that were implemented. Now, the new Permian company has replaced cognitive memory with a totally new system, which is more general and more flexible. And it's based, it's also based on the tensors. They also support a more direct mapping to and from GPT. GPT also uses tensors and you can map the GPT tensors or the underlying OpenAI system to the Permian system and you get some very nice interaction between the two. So the, and also we have a new prologue system that supports the full ISO standard. It also includes a built in predicates which are implemented in C++ that support high speed operations on vectors, matrices, tensors and neural networks. So it's prologue for using logic and reasoning and deduction. And also it uses the uses tensors for doing a wide range of other things. So the point is prologue with the tensors can interact closely with GPT. And I'll give some examples of that. And these are a couple of slides of Aaron's. And since Aaron is going to be primarily giving a a talk, a demo, I'll just show this. The first is an article at the top. There's the abstract in the beginning of an article that talks about COVID-19 and the molecular biochemistry pathology diagnosis and therapeutic strategies. And to analyze this article, Permian translated to conceptual graphs as shown in the following slides. For reasoning, it uses common logic with extensions. This is common law, the common logic as represented in conceptual graphs. Conceptual graphs represent full common logic plus extensions. And to handle vagueness and approximations, Permian also uses neural nets and mathematical methods. It's a precise mathematical methods of statistics and probability. And the Permian tools can translate conceptual graphs to English, but they can also use GPT for translating conceptual graphs to a better, more readable form of English. So actually, GPT does do better translations of conceptual graphs to English. Although the CGs to English are correct, they're not as fluent and as they're, they're not quite as readable as the as what GPT can do. Now here's a picture of these, each dot represents one concept node and it shows a very complicated pattern. And notice how there are several groups of concepts that are linked around. There's, there's there are five areas where there are important concepts in the middle that have links to other things. So there's one concept with a lot of links and five links and then other, other concept nodes which are linked vaguely, they're not as important. And this is an important thing about what the reasoning does in the, in Permian, it can analyze the patterns of these concepts and hone in on the ones that are really the central focus of the important sub kinds of reasoning. That's very important for directing it. It's not just a whole set of words mapped to graphs. It's a set of words mapped to patterns of graphs in which certain patterns are more central to the that, to the issues. They focus right in on this issues that are being discussed. And here's an example with virus at the center and it showed that this shows a conceptual graph in which virus is linked by, has capability to recognize, has as part replicate, replicate how, has as part release, has as part viral membrane, has as part helicase, has as, has capability of binding and all those connections. So this shows how you can hone in on one of those central points like the word virus was very central to a huge amount. If you look back at the previous slide, notice the one that virus, the biggest and most complicated link was to virus and virus had that big pattern around it. And if you look over there, here is the kind of things that were linked to the word virus. And here's another one which shows how some of these other things that says that SARS-CoV-2 has binding affinity to ACE2, which is a part of intestinal and enterocytes. And ACE is a protein, ACE2 is a protein and SARS-CoV-2 has has capability and something here is used for SARS-CoV-2 and all these are, this is part of the conceptual graph of that whole article. And here's example of just one sentence and it shows these, the blue things are the concepts and the green things are the relations. And here it says, a cryo M structure is a structure of COVID-19's protein that has a and so, so and so on. You can read that and it shows the full, I can't read the backpack because on my screen, there's one of these other little things from, that's blocking part of my, what I can see. But I'm sure that you can see my full screen. Okay. And here's another example of what Permian has done. It can summarize and answer questions. And so you can have questions of various kinds and you can also have summaries. Here's one thing summary. SARS-CoV-2 is a short update on molecular biochemistry pathology diagnostics, et cetera. Now, this does not have a really enough content about the whole article. And it's not very readable. It's sort of the verbiage is not quite so good, but it does have references to the sources. And that's one very important point. The Permian finds exactly which articles were used. It has the exact traces back and forth. So when you get answers, you don't just get a random answer right out of the blue. You get an answer that can be traced all the way back to exactly which source stated which point. And that's very important if you're trying to do reasoning and evaluation, especially when these are critical issues in very important applications of various kinds. And here is another example. This is the summarization in question answering, which is done by by GPT. And so this translated conceptual graphs to G, to an answer, to a summary that's much more readable than the answer that you got was, that is translated by the Permian's own conceptual graph to English translator. And here's another example. This is another summary about an article which says ACE2, about ACE2 is present, but mainly not is present mainly, but not exclusively in the young alveolar epithelium, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And this is less readable, but it does cite all the sources and shows exactly where each point is coming from, that there is all these, all of these sites and so on, where every piece of information has come from. Now here is the same article summary done by GPT. It's much more readable. It has more information and it's much more readable form. But it doesn't have all the links to all of the sources and it's not quite. So the point is GPT does have a lot of useful things mainly in language translation. That's its most reliable part. It also is very useful in finding an immense amount of information from the web. But the problem is that you have to be careful in finding out exactly what it's using at any particular moment. Now, here, I'll talk now about some issues about perception and cognition and how this works in the human brain. And this is very important for understanding what is it that we really have to simulate if we really want to do complete AI or as they call it, general AI or super AI. The point is that cognitive, as Marvin Minsky is an AI guy from way back. He's one of the founders of the original meeting on artificial intelligence at Dartmouth in 1956. And he's been very active in teaching and that for years and wrote several books on the subject. Now, the interesting thing is that he wrote a couple of books that are significant. One is the Society of Mind and earlier one in 1986. And then he also wrote another one on the emotion machine and that word emotion is important. And because he's, in his later book, he emphasized emotions as a point. And in the earlier book, the Society of Mind, he says, the thing that makes us intelligent is there is no trick. The power of intelligence stems from our vast diversity, not from any single perfect principle. Our species has evolved many effective imperfect methods and each one of us develops more. And the point is, our mind consists of, as he says, emerges from conflicts and negotiations among societies of processes that constantly challenge one another. Now, Barcelou is a psychologist who also has a solid understanding of the neural problems and neural issues. And what he said is very, very similar. Instead of saying a society of interacting processes, he says, a coordinated system of systems, just two different phrases for exactly the same phenomenon, how the mind emerges from all these different, different kinds of pieces of, in the brain. And so Barcelou says, cognition emerges from deep dependencies between all the basic systems in the brain. And he mentions them, goal management, perception, action, memory, reward, affect. Affect includes emotions and learning. And we believe that the human cognition greatly reflects the social evolution and context so that society and context are fundamental to human cognition. And different people in different societies and different contexts, different periods of time have very different ways of thinking. And it's not language based. When you talk about the language of thought, that's not fundamental. The language is just at the top. Just look at the next slide. This shows evolution. The evolution from the bilateral worms, the worms that had two little eye spots that are sensitive to light evolved to all the major chordates and the anthropods also and the, the insects and the shellfish and all of the cordata and the vertebrates and the fish and the humans and all the mammals. All of them evolved in the past 600 million years from worms. Now, 600 years from worms to chimpanzees. And in just six million years, we go from apes to humans. And the point is that the human verbal system evolved in a very short time. 99% of the foundation leads us to the chimps and the bonobos and gorillas. And it's only the last 1% are the human methods of speech. But the underlying methods of perception, action, emotion and social interactions are similar, very similar to the chimpanzees and the bonobos. And actually, the bonobos are probably more human like than the chimps. And, and the other apes, the orangutans and the gorillas, they also have a huge amount of familiar, they, they really bind with humans very well. And all of them can learn a subset of human sign language. And the point is that Homo habilis and erectus, the earlier versions of humans, probably had proto languages that enabled them to teach tool making, that tool making and speech go together. You can see the way the tools evolved from the early Homo habilis up through the erectus and the modern humans. They evolved in very, very interesting ways that required language in order for the parents to teach their children. And that's a very important point. Language and tool making evolve together. And this shows the brain and the areas of the cerebral cortex that do various kinds of things. And occipital lobes in the back are active in perception and recognition. And the very rear, rearmost part of the occipital lobes are the, is the visual cortex that is responsible for blind, for, for vision. If that is damaged, people are blind. However, they're still can recognize some, some amount of vision because the brain stem and the cerebellum also get vision coming in. And so vision can be done by the cerebellum and the brain stem without going through the visual cortex. So even people who are congenitally blind do have some aspects of vision, not really able to, not conscious vision, but some aspects. The temporal lobe is very important. That's right next to the ear and that's where the speech comes in. And Vernica's area is the area where speech recognition occurs. And it's connected to the parietal lobe. That's where patterns of various kinds of patterns occur. The occipital lobe is mainly for recognition. Parietal lobe is for patterns. The temporal lobe is connecting speech and other kinds of reasoning. And then the frontal lobe, that's where, that's where the various complex thinking and intentionality and purpose and goals. It also has the motion parts. It also has Broca's area. That's where languages are generated. And right next to Broca's area is the area where verbs are recognized. So nouns are mainly recognized in the occipital lobe, in the temporal and parietal lobe. But the verbs which connect everything together, they bring an intentionality. They're right next door to Broca's area so that the verbs are very fundamental to purpose, goals and intentions. All right. And here is another example. This is from Sydney Lam, who had this diagram and I just enhanced it with a little pictures and all. And hit, one of his example was the concept of the word of the noun fork. And there's an eye that's, or pair of eyes that are looking at a fork. And that goes to the visual cortex, the back end of the occipital lobe. And then at here it shows the various locations. V is the visual recognition, the temporal lobe. V is the visual recognition, the temporal lobe, and it links to the visual cortex, all those links. And then the C is the concept of forks in the parietal lobe, which has links to all the other areas. Uh P is for the tactile feel of a fork. That's right at uh in the in the parietal lobe, right next to the motor areas. M is for the motor schemata for manipulating a fork in the frontal lobe. So the uh so the so the beginnings of uh intentionality and motion are right there. It the boundary line between the uh frontal, prefrontal lobe, the frontal lobes and the parietal lobes. That that that's where you have the motor cortex for doing various kinds of uh operations. Now, P R is the phonology for recognizing the word fork. That is in Wernicke's area. And P A is a phonology for the sound fork in the primary auditory cortex. That's right next to the ear. And that's where the first stages of uh of the interpretation occur. And then P P is uh controls for producing the sound of fork. That's in Broca's area. And that's also right next to the verb area. So that shows the various pieces of the brain. All every one of those points is important. And note that there is not a single area for each word. The whole brain is involved in every word that you speak and every sentence that you speak. So you can't just say one part. Another thing is that the archetypal uh fasciculus now and the archetypal the archetypal fasciculus is a bundle of nerves. And then the humans, it connects Wernicke's area for recognizing speech to Broca's area for generating speech. But notice that has lots and lots of connections all over the brain. This is why the human speech has so many interconnections with everything we're doing and thinking. Now, if you look at the chimpanzee, uh that's the equivalent uh in the chimpanzee brain, there's a bundle of nerves, but they're not as thick and they're and they are not connected as tightly to all. They don't branch out as much. That is a one reason why the chimpanzees are capable of learning human sign language, but they're not capable of learning the full complexity of human sign language. And then uh at the bottom is the macaque, one of the monkeys, one of the most popular monkeys. Uh when you're around in Southeast Asia, you find them all at place, all over the place. And the macaques have a have a bundle of uh fibers there, but it's a much uh smaller bundle and it's much weaker. And it's one reason why the macaques do not have the kind of flexibility in reasoning and uh vocalization as the chimpanzee or the humans. Now, here's the cerebellum. Now, the cerebellum is tucked under, cerebellum means little brain in Latin. And it's a little brain that's tucked under the big brain, which is a cerebral cortex. But one amazing thing that was just understood just a few years ago, not too long ago, maybe last decade or so. And that that is that the cerebral cortex has only sixteen billion neurons, but the cerebellum has almost seventy billion neurons. And it varies a little bit from one brain to another. But uh the point is that the cerebellum has more than four times the number of neurons as a cerebral cortex. And the point is it's much smaller because the neurons are very small and they're very tightly interconnected in special kinds of patterns. And the word that I use is it's a G P U. It's a graphic processing unit. What the cerebellum does is very highly processing uh very complex information. And people used to think that or the psychologists used to think that the that the cerebellum was only used for controlling motion. But no, it's also active when people are thinking about motion. We're thinking anything having to do with motion or complex imagery. The cerebellum is very active. And amazingly, it's also mathematical. And they compared mathematicians and non-mathematicians. And they found that by the brain scans uh in response to sentences about math, non-mathematicians, for non-mathematicians, a cerebellum does not light up at all. It does not, it is not used. But professional mathematicians or even just students who are who are very, who are learning a lot of mathematics, the cerebellum is very active when they're doing math. The cerebellum is a graphic processing unit which does mathematics. It does uh and it does logical reasoning, formal logic and math, very mathematical. And it also does motion and thinking about motion and thinking about complex imagery. That is not conscious. It's underneath the cerebellum, uh it's underneath the cerebral cortex. And the only thing that's conscious are the things that are going on in the, especially in the visual occipital area. That's the part that's the most conscious part, the things that we're really thinking about. Okay, now here's a uh here are two mathematicians, Paul Halmos and Albert Einstein. And I won't read all this, but the point is that mathematics is never deductive in creation. The mathematician at work makes vague guesses, visualizes broad generalizations and jumps to unwarranted conclusions. And the point is that the mathematician arranges the ideas and becomes convinced of their truth long before he writes down a logical proof. So the logical proof is the end stage of mathematics. It's not the part where you invent stuff. It's not the part where you do the creative work. It's just the end stage when you have to write down the results. Now, writing that down is very important because you might have made some mistakes. And so it does the checking. And also for uh G P T, you need that checking in order to make sure that you're correct. And that deductive stage at the end end stage, that's the part that uh that the cerebral cortex is doing. The in fact, the language areas of the human brain are the ones that are of the cortex are the ones that are doing the proof stage. And that's a very laborious, complex part. And as uh Halmo said, it's relatively trivial part. The big part is the visualization. That's important. Einstein was a physicist, but he was a very mathematical physicist. He never did the uh experiments himself. Uh the they, the one thing that physicists say is never allow a theoretician to walk into your lab. They just have to walk in and something will break. And Einstein was uh Niels Bohr was a very, was a famous mathematician, uh physicist, theoretical physicist. And they said that one time all he did was ride on a train that went past Groningen. He was going from uh his from uh Denmark, going from Denmark to Switzerland. And just at the moment when his train passed through Groningen, that's when everything in their lab just crashed. That's shows how powerful Niels Bohr was as a mathematician. So anyway, uh Einstein said that the words of language do not play any role in my mechanism of thought. The physical entities are certain signs, more or less uh popular, they're images and muscular, visual and muscular kinds of imagery that that is what happens in his thinking. And he says conventional words or other signs, in other words, mathematical symbols have to be sought for laboriously only in a secondary stage when the associative play is sufficiently established. So the point is both math Einstein and how most and also uh and also Charles Sanders Percy philosopher, logician and scientist that I have been studying quite a bit. Uh Percy also agrees completely with Einstein. In fact, the words that he used were saying that he has a kind of a left handed brain and it's hard for him to find the words. And his main thinking involves visual and muscular uh kinds of things. So he's thinking and diagrammatic visual image like thinking. And the words he uses are afterwards in a secondary stage. They're not his primary mode of thinking. His language of thought is not language, neither is Einsteins or Halmos or most mathematicians. Okay, now this is another point about that cerebral cortex. Remember I said the cerebral cortex is the G P U, the powerful reasoning system? Well, here's a man, very few uh very, very small number of people uh who have a damaged or absent cerebellum survive. And Jonathan Kelleher is what Kelleher is one who did. And I recommend that you link at the bottom, a man's incomplete brain reveals cerebellum's role in thought and emotion. And I think you should click on that and get a uh an N P R uh uh an N P R vision thing that shows you uh how this goes on. And it has, it has some discussion with the Kelleher and shows him in action. And you can see how he behaves. And the point is that on the left is this dark area. That is Jonathan Kelleher's brain. He gave permission for all this to be published because he wanted people to know how what the role was. He was born without a cerebellum. On the right, there is a normal male at the same age, thirty three. And you can see how the cerebellum is quite a large piece underneath the brain. And the point is that uh J Kelleher's stages were very long delayed. It took him many years of physical therapy, speech therapy, special education. He still has a job, but he's he has, he is able to hold an office job, but he still has very serious cognitive, emotional, social, and learning deficit. He's very awkward. He could never drive a car. And he is uh really uh capable of living by himself. But he has very serious defects. So his thinking processes, which are usually done, the high speed processes of the cerebellum are done in his cerebral cortex, which has many fewer neurons. And it's simulating what the cerebellum should be doing, but at a much slower, more less impressive way. Here's a uh here are points about sign language. And it point is that it's similar to English word order, the American Sign Language, A S L. But there's many syntactic features are absent. But the motions use three dimensional spatial motions. And in fact, this is something that's important. Uh people also use uh gestures when they're talking. And the gestures reflect the fact of what our chimpanzee and uh gorilla and cousins do. They use mo, they use gestures uh and they don't, they use, they don't use, they do some grunting and some how, but it's not really for that's more for emotional rather than for uh rather than for conceptual stuff. And for conceptual stuff, they do a lot of pointing and they do a lot of uh kind of gestures similar to what that man is doing, this diagram. Okay, on the next slide, we get to the uh points about bilingual. These are children or babies that are born uh to bilingual parents. And there are four pairs of lang of languages that, and this is, this is done in Quebec, where the four languages are English, French, American Sign Language, and Longue des Seine Quebecois, which is the uh Quebec version of sign language. So there are uh the point that they make is that the monolingual babies and bilingual babies go through exactly the same stages at every age for both spoken languages and sign languages. And hearing babies born to profoundly deaf parents babble with their hands. Their first language, even though they're, even their hearing is okay, they babble with their hands, but not vocally. That they learn bilingual in two languages. They uh that pet uh that Laura Petito, who was doing this study, uh even found some uh a couple of people uh a at least one, I'm not sure whether they found more than one, of one uh pair of parents that were bilingual in the American Sign Language and the Longue des Seine Quebecois. And the point is that their uh babies babbled with both of the sign languages, but not with their hands. Interesting point, and her conclusion is any hypothesis about a language acquisition device must be independent of modality. It must, the the people who learn sign language, even double kinds of sign languages uh later are able to learn a spoken language. And they are, they they can't speak it very well, but at least they learn to read it and translate it to and from their signs. And the point is that what's happening underneath uh in the brain is not only based on a speech, it must be related to the signs. And uh so you can read all this yourself. The point is, is there a language of thought? And the question is, how could it include a geometry of the subject matter? And if it does, should you call it a quote, language of thought? And better terms might be cognitive map, mental model, or stereoscopic moving images. That's what goes on in the brain, stereoscopic moving images. We can have a, we can have, we can play back a movie or a scene that we saw at some point. And in our brain, we can watch ourselves doing it in a kind of, not as graphically, but at least we can remember those things. And in fact, in human memory, the pictures, the memory for pictures is immensely larger than memory for words. And people don't remember the words exactly. They remember something deeper than words, more like images perhaps. So the point is that the only kind of words that people remember correctly are the ones that have uh a very stylized kind of things such as poetry. You can remember the exact sequence of words in poetry or in songs, in songs and music. That's the only kind of uh precise words that you can memorize. And memorizing a complete uh thing like Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, you can memorize that. But memorizing much more is really difficult. And here's more about the connection between all the parts of the brain. It's very complex and there's not just one little piece with one method of thinking. All these different parts of the brain have different representations, different kinds of neurons and different ways of connecting them. And they all work together, but they're working together in very different ways. So it's not just one uniform kind of neural network. It's multiplicities of networks that are connected in various kinds of complex ways. And this uh diagram shows a block diagram of how those various parts of the brain work together. Now, here's an interesting example. This was an example, the title of the project uh at the bottom by Mason and Just says, physics instruction induces changes in neural representation, that the way that the brain thinks changes as people learn uh something about physics, take studying the physics. This is an example where the they chose fourteen participants, studied four different devices. And they deliberately chose college students who were not majors in science or engineering. So they want or mathematics. They wanted students who had uh whose knowledge of scientific and engineering and and mathematical training was kind of minimal. And however, they gave them four different devices, a bathroom scale, a disc brace system, a fire extinguisher and a trumpet. And they had uh, they gave them instructions in how these things work. They showed the parts, they took them apart, showed them what the different parts of these things were and how they work together. And at the top of that are the pictures of the items. And at the second underneath each one is a diagram of what the various parts are. Now, the interesting thing is during the test sessions, uh they had an F M R I standard scanner, which recorded patterns of brain activity. And at the beginning, the training session, they just showed pictures and named the parts. A bathroom scale consists of a spring lever, a ratchet and a dial. And then in later uh sessions, they explained the structures and the causes. The spring pulls a ratchet which rotates a gear attached to a measurement dial. Okay, so they had fourteen different, they had four part fourteen participants, each one of which participated in four sessions in a brain scanner. So they had four times fourteen uh different examples and uh to show uh where they had the data. Now, here is the left, here is the left, the F M R I's scanned pictures from the left hemisphere. Notice they use the left hemisphere, not the right hemisphere, because the right hemisphere uh lights up with all of the activity going on in speech. And uh they did not want to focus just on the speech. They wanted to focus on what is happening in other areas of the brain other than speech. And so notice when they're uh on the left hand side of the picture number one is for visual perception. And when the uh questions they asked during the F M R I scan were about the objects and parts, that activated the visual cortex where they were thinking, the people were thinking about what the images were. And when they're thinking about the images, the visual cortex line lights up with the parts of the brain. with the parts of the brain for recognizing those things. Now, when they asked for questions about structural relations, that activated the parietal lobes and the visual cortex. And so they're linking the parts that they recognize to the parts that have, to the information about their interconnections. The parietal lobes are basic, basically dealing with binary connections between different parts. And there you can see very bright area. In fact, the area where they're thinking about the interconnections, the visual, not just the visual cortex, but a lot of the other parts of the occipital lobe are lighting up very bright. And also the parietal lobes are lighting up very bright. And so they're talking about the interconnections of the parts. Now then, the third kind is questions about causal effects of someone operating the system. That activated the frontal lobes. The frontal lobes deal with patterns of intentions and causality and the reasons why. So basically, you can think of, if you think of the, the question words, the visual perception answers what, what is it? The, the parietal lobes talk about how, how is it connected? And then the, and then the frontal lobes talk about causality, intentionality, purpose. And that's talking about triatic relations that show how the various pieces are interconnected and why they're interconnected. That's the most important part. Cognitive learning involves structural and causal relations that link cord and coordinate perception, action and reasoning. So reasoning goes on in the frontal lobes. Action goes on in the parietal lobes. And the, and the perception goes on in the occipital lobes. So that's an important point. With the brain does not have just one uniform neural network. It has lots of different parts that are specialized for many different purposes. And I think this is an important lesson for artificial intelligence. We need to do those different parts. We need to, not just perception and not just the binary causality. We also have to think about the triatic intentions which guide the perception and action. Okay, so the other point that I make is about Charles Sanders Percy. Now, he was doing this in the late 19th and early 20th century. And he was a scientist, logician, mathematician, who also dealt with all the philosophical issues involved in this. And so he analyzed the categories that Kant had in his critique of pure reason. And Kant had a table of 12 categories. And Percy noticed that 12 is four times three. And he recognized that there's a triatic classification implicit in Kant's patterns. The first is a quality expressible by a monadic predicate. The second is a reaction expressible by a dyadic relation. And third is reason or intention that relates the first and the second. And he first started using word, phaneroscope, phenomenology, which Kant used. But then he coined a new word called, which he called fanneron for the mental experience. And he called the fanneron is whatever is throughout its entirely open to direct observation. That means this is what we observe when we are thinking. And he compared fanneroscopy to the work of artists who can see exactly, who can depict exactly what they see prior to any interpretation. The artists are thinking directly about the stuff. Okay, oh, I've got over my time. So let me just wrap this up quickly. And, and in Percy's calendar, intentionality is a mediating third. And so there are the three parts for Percy's visuals, monadic relations, dyadic relations and triatic relations. And I will finish with an observation by the linguist Zelig Harris. We understand what other people say through empathy, imagining ourselves to be in a situation they were in, including imaging and wanting to say what they wanted to say. And I made the point that this sentence, Zelig Harris invented a version of transformational grammar. And his star pupil, Noam Chomsky, just extracted one part of it. He did not talk about anything about empathy. I believe that Zelig Harris had a much deeper understanding of language than anything that Noam Chomsky ever wrote. And now there's a lot more to say about this. And but the point is that empathy is so fundamental that Chomsky would talk about the subsets of language that map to formal logics. That's essential for mathematical precision in science and engineering. But the discovery of those principles depends on something much deeper. And also empathy depends on a deep emotional connection of people with other people or even with their pets. The animals, people have a deep empathy with their animals. And that's the issue. Could you have AI systems that have intentions, emotions and empathy? And I quote the comedian George Burns, sincerity is everything. Once you can fake that, you've got it made. And so the point is, we, if you really want to have a truly intelligent system, you've got to somehow fake empathy and sincerity. And so until we get fake empathy, we're not going to have a truly intelligent, general intelligence in our computer systems. Well, I'll get, I'll let, I'm sorry that I took so much time and let Aaron go in. And we'll give some demos of how the Perion systems work.
Thanks, thanks very much, John. Aaron.
Hi.
Can you?
I can share my screen.